All right, at six o'clock, we'll get started and call the meeting to order, please. And, uh, thank you, sir. Ms. Laurie is going to do the pledge and, uh, Ms. Pam is going to do the implication. So if everybody would stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in its mission and in its goal. It is essential.
Finally, thank you for this time to come together and, um, we thank you that we're able to represent the city of Mount Pleasant. We just thank you for all you've done for us, for keeping us safe through these storms that have come and gone this last few months and just pray for the protection of our citizens as we continue on. Be with us as we make decisions this evening for our town and its citizens. And thank you again for all that you do for us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, ladies. All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Knowles?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mayor White?
Here.
Ms. Alderson?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Oh, me.
Here.
Here. Approval and correction of minutes for prior meetings, we have two, the study session of May the fifteenth and the regular session of May the twentieth. Once you've had an opportunity to review, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from the study session of May fifteenth and the regular session of May twentieth as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a number of seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Ms. Julie just walked in. Thank you for being here and, uh, if you'll come down front, please, ma'am. And if the commissioners would like to come down as well. I'll read this in just a minute, but I just want to say thank you. You have, you have done a wonderful addition to Mount Pleasant schools. You did. Last thing I got to do over there was to, you know, rocket mom. And let me tell you, that was fun. And, and to go over there all these years and interact with all the students and the environment, not just the students, but the teachers and everybody, thank you. I mean, that's the next generation of this community. The thank.
Well, I love them. I love them all.
I know you do.
Everyone of them, the little stinkers.
That's right.
And I hope you have a good replacement, so it's being left in good hands with Miss syndrome.
Absolutely. Thank, really, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Whereas the citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee are rightfully proud of those individuals who bring personal pride, have dedication to success, believe in family and spiritual values, and bring their education to our city. Whereas Ms. Tidwell earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education off to the state university. She had a teaching career at Palio Community School. She earned her master's degree in administration and supervision in her library science degree in TSU. Tidwell joined the Mount Pleasant Elementary School Facility in twenty-one as a librarian. Later she served as top one facilitator and assistant principal, will be named principal in two thousand sixteen. Whereas Ms. Tidwell was named the principal of the year for the South Central Region, was top five finalist in Tennessee principal of the year in two thousand nineteen. To the year of time at Mount Pleasant Elementary, Ms. Tidwell has led the school in becoming a reward school, a level five school, and a Tennessee designated STEM school. He has always been driven by the philosophy of putting kids first. Ms. Tidwell completed thirty-six years of education on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in her sights in Edridge, and is a proud mom of a daughter. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant and its mayor and board of commissioners wish to join in honoring this outstanding individual for accomplishments. This town now therefore, I, Bill White, mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, will hereby proclaim Tuesday, July, June the seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, as the Tidwell Day.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank y'all for everything.
Thank you.
And just, uh, I'm not from Mount Pleasant, and I, I've said this before, but when I came here about in, I love Mount Pleasant, it's my second home, and I appreciate, um, all of you, um, who've supported us. No matter what happens, I've always felt like I could call on the fireman or the pol- police who won't tell you that I call a big daddy. He's in my house. And big daddy. Yeah. But, and I appreciate all of you and, um, uh, everything you've done to support us and support this school and our kids, which are the, the reason we're all here. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Big daddy's minutes. Big daddy. Big daddy's daddy, child.
I'm, I'm not gonna forget that either. All right. Completion review of unfinished business. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven thirty-three, this is a public hearing and the final reading and ordinance to amend ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven twenty-five, appropriating the revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining the departmental functions of the city for the fiscal year beginning July the first twenty twenty-four and ending June the thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, providing an effective date. Chipper?
So the budget amendment didn't really change a lot. I just amended the general fund and I added about ten thousand more into the amendment, uh, just using revenues, nothing sitting the fund balance to be able to offset some emergency repairs that we had to have on some of our fire trucks. Um, a lot of it was already in the budget, but I just wanted to give us some wiggle room and, um, try to, you know, have enough in there just in case something else happened in the next few weeks. But, um, that's pretty much the only other thing that changed between May meeting and June meeting. The rest of the amendment is the same. Purpose of the amendment is really, um, to have enough funds in all of our line items until we don't overexpand anything, because when you all set the budget, so technically the next ordinance, when we set the budget, it's the law. So if we overexpand any of those appropriations, we're breaking the law. So we have to make sure we have enough in those budget line items. That's how we get the findings, if we don't have enough in those lines.
If we're breaking the law, does that mean we don't have to pay? We don't have to pay?
No, we still paid it. We overpaid it, that's why, and we get the findings.
Any questions, Chipper?
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing and a final reading. Would anyone care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect that no one offered to speak. That being said, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven thirty-three as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven thirty-four, again, this is a public hearing and a final rating, ordinance of the city adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the year beginning July the first of twenty twenty-five and ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Chipper?
The budget ordinance did not change at all between, um, May and June meeting, so the notes are exactly the same. I did leave a copy for every one of you at your table. Tax rate does not change, it's a dollar sixty-nine, that's what it's been since the last reappraisal. Next year is a reappraisal year, so, you know, we'll probably review some of these numbers at that point again, and then that's pretty much it. If you all had any more questions that came up between last month's meeting and this month's meeting, happy to answer.
Appreciate what y'all did.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
With that being said, this is a public hearing and a final reading. Would anyone care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect no one did. With that being said, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion in favor of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven thirty-four as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chipper, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent work. Uh, I was with, uh, Bethany Lay today, Victor, which interviewed for the job, and boy, he's catching. Good Lord. Fifty cent tax increase. So, so thank you, really. All right, monthly report from mayor. Uh, first thing I want to bring up is we have had a, a citizen of this community pass away and it's Mike's brother. And Mr. Davis, Mr. John Davis, was the vice mayor of Mount Pleasant for a number of years and also served on the county commission for, golly, forever, wasn't it, Mike?
Yep, twelve years, I think it's.
Yeah. And, uh, was always a big part of the community, not just the city, but was a big part of the community and just making sure that it would stay together and was a whole of it. And I just wanted to take a moment and recognize Mr. John Davis, he was a big part of this community and, uh, Mike, uh, we gotta reap up on the front door for him.
Appreciate that.
Good man.
Thanks a lot.
You're up just down the street. And then, uh, on a bright note, uh, downtown, uh, we had the, uh, meeting last Thursday. Uh, substantial completion is supposed to be completed by next Friday. I think that's still on, right, Jack? We'll find out next Thursday. The, uh, one thing that is not going to be able to be completed, just so everybody understands, is the plannings around that you see, uh, through the T-DOT grant we got, they will not allow you to plant until November through early spring, uh, so that you don't lose them. And, but they are already going to do some work on there so that it's not a fall hazard. They're gonna get those up a little more level. Now, it's not gonna be exactly what we want until we can get there. Um, they are going to assemble one of the picnic tables for us this week and put it down here, so we can see the size of the tables and understand, because there's a bunch of them. And, uh, one of their requests is, is that we possibly try to, until we can get some greener in, possibly put umbrellas into those tables so that you can at least sit out there and not burn completely up. So, uh, we have asked Carolyn Rash, which is the new lady at Main Street, uh, to kind of give us a little help with that, and she's been more than willing to do. She's out on vacation this week, so I told them, Philip, just as long as they could get that for us by Friday and get it out there, then when she would come in. She had an idea that, I mean, we got a lot of those tables, and if you try to put them all around that fountain, you're gonna wind up in there like this. So where do we put some of them? They weigh about four hundred and sixty pounds apiece. So, uh, downtown, I, I've heard more compliments about it in the last week than, and it's finally good to hear.
I love the light.
Yes.
Looks good.
Looks good. So that's all I've got.
Question?
Yes.
Will the fountain be running?
Uh, there is, if you'll look right out over here, Pam, there is a big concrete pool right there. It's up, what, two feet off the ground? There's a bunch of wires coming out of it. There is a box that is supposed to be installed. First part of next week was their hope, right?
Come back order, so.
Yeah. And once it is installed, that controls all of the lights downtown as well as the fountain.
Okay.
That's why they're saying.
Maybe just a few weeks away.
Possibly substantial completion. It won't be totally complete, but substantial by next Friday.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions on it? Thankfully, it's finally just about done. Monthly financial budget report. Think you kind of already done that?
I know, that's what was, um, between the budget amendment and the actual budget, the notes for the year end stuff is the same. We're just start, actually starting year end, this is about to be the last week of the fiscal year, so starting July one, we'll be in a new fiscal year. Um, with the budget passing tonight, in the next week, we are going to submit it to the comptroller's office. Um, hopefully, in the past, you know, we've not had any issues, so we've just, oh, we've got notes in there for any questions that they may have. Um, so we'll go, go ahead and submit that, and we're already starting on this year's audit, the auditors have kind of reached out, so we're starting to work and facilitate the new auditor soon, so. Pretty much where we are, it's June thirtieth, so the whole staff is going to be working on completing the books out, and we're hoping most of the other staff is taking Fourth of July off, so they're not gonna spend any money.
Yeah.
We don't want to have nothing breaking and nobody's here. It's like the finance office and all of us are gonna be here, but, um, yeah, that's, that's been the running joke, is a lot of people have Fourth of July off, so like, yes. Like, we can get stuff done, so.
Any questions for Chipper?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hearing none, entertain a motion for the approval of the financial and budget report.
I make a move, motion that we accept the financial budget report as given.
Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Got a number of seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from city manager, Philip?
Mayor Commissioners, I do have a few bullet points, but this month I asked Mr. Lee Rogers with T-DOT to come give us a update on the bridge, and gracefully he come in to do that, so, uh, I'd like for you to entertain a little time for him.
Yes, please. Probably had more questions on the bridge than downtown.
Yes.
So, yeah, and so I'm Lee Rogers, I am the, uh, manager for District Thirty-Eight, so that covers Murray, Hickman, Dixon, Humphreys, Stewart, Houston, Montgomery, and Robertson Counties. So I have now nine counties, I used to be the team lead over just Murray County, and my boss, uh, retired, and I was the lucky one to receive his job after he left. So now I'm the manager over all those, but I am the one that, uh, started this job down here in Mount Pleasant, uh, talked with the mayor along with Mr. Grooms about that in the very early on stages of it. Uh, we had meetings, talked with them about it, um, that type of thing, and, uh, yeah, so I told Phil I'd come and give him a break on having to explain, explain this bridge. So, uh, the bridge, uh, was originally going to be done this month. Uh, I don't know if y'all have noticed, but all the rain we've been getting the past, well, ever since it stopped snowing, we've been getting rain. So we had a really hard winter, uh, they weren't able to pour concrete like they thought they would be able to. Temperatures get so low, you can't pour concrete, uh, it's gotta stay above freezing for three days. So, uh, that pushed them back a little bit, and then this rain has absolutely just kept them from doing a lot of the grading work that needs to be done. The bridge itself is complete. We're just working on the grading up to the bridge. Uh, right now, the plans are Rogers group will be in, uh, first or middle part of next week to fit, let, lay the final layer of base stone, and then they'll start paving, uh, on either end of it. They're talk, they're looking at two to three days per side of paving. We got ten inches of asphalt to go out there, and if it, we're in summer, and so it takes quite a lo, quite a bit for that to cool off in order for you to put the next layer on. So as soon as the asphalt goes on, they'll come in and paint the bridge, it's gonna be pretty. Uh, then after that, they'll come in and install the guardrail. The guardrail installer should be in the first week of July. Once the guardrail is installed, I have told them to temporarily stripe it and open it up to traffic. So whatever is left on the punch list to do, they will, will do it, whether it be flagging or they make, they may come in at night and do it, where it's just a lot easier, a lot less traffic, that type of thing.
Awesome.
So, uh, that's an update on that. Is there any questions as far as the bridge, the concept, why we chose to go this route, that type of thing?
Appreciate it. It's been, it's been a long drawn out.
Yeah, and I appreciate.
For the most part, it's over west, so all of that behind.
I appreciate y'all bearing with us. Uh, I, when I came to the mayor and Mr. Grooms about this originally, we were looking at doing this option where it was close the road down, tear the bridge, build it back. We're gonna be right at seven months, which is pretty, pretty quick to do a bridge, one hundred and thirty-three feet long. Uh, the other option was to phase it, you're looking at eighteen months with a signal there where you'd have a minimum three minutes sitting in traffic. We all know people are gonna end up bypassing it anyway, so, uh, we also, so we saved time and we went back, I went back and pulled the budget, we saved, uh, a couple million dollars on not doing a phase job. It's always cheaper and quicker to tear down and build back completely. So a lot of, right away, we didn't have to buy a lot of utilities, we didn't have to move, a lot of phasing, and you get a better product when you close the bridge down like that.
So somewhere mid-July to kind of outside.
I, I've been told the second week in July, uh, we've been knocking on wood, so it's, uh, the rain is not pushing up, holding up, so. Yeah.
That's funny.
You gotta learn to laugh, hey?
Hey, listen, in this job, you take the rain with the sunshine.
Oh, you gotta learn to laugh. But thank y'all, because, I mean, it is, I mean, you couldn't control the weather.
No. And then that's, that's the, the, the hardest part on these jobs is timing, and we don't know what the winter's gonna do, we don't know what the spring's gonna do. I don't remember a time it's rained this much, it is far into June, so, uh, it's, it's been, usually we're, we're praying for it to rain right about now, so. Um, so another thing that's been brought to the department is I've got quite a few requests at looking at dropping the speed limit through downtown Mount Pleasant right here. It's currently twenty-five, um, I think, uh, some, the people that are requesting it's wanting to drop it to fifteen. So I was, I was asked to bring it to y'all, so it is our road, but is your community, and it is totally up to you guys on what you would want to do on that.
Could, could I, Cory, can I ask this question? Would that be something we should vote on in July?
We can't control the.
Again, we're, we're gonna do this at the request of Mount Pleasant, this, we're not, we're not the ones initiating this. This has been brought to our attention.
Kind of give all the commissioners time to kind of talk to the people that you talk to and get their thoughts.
Yeah, you can do a recommendation later.
Yeah. Lee, are you okay with us putting it off for thirty days?
Yeah, you can put it off for a year and a half or all that, just let me know what you want to do. And, and it would be at no cost to y'all, we would, we would supply the signs, we would install the signs, all that, so it's at no cost to you guys, but it, like I said, it's been requested of us to look at it and talking with our traffic department, uh, in Nashville, it's totally y'all's call, it's, we, we, even though it's our road, it's your community, y'all have to say so on.
We'll, uh, we'll have a recommendation at our July meetings, that suit everybody?
Do you have a question, Mr. Grooms?
Yeah, Mr. Rogers, what from point A to point B, where are we looking at?
Just wherever the twenty-five, uh, I came in from the south side this afternoon, I don't know exactly how far it is. I assume it's from at least where the bridge is to outside of, outside of the.
I say no.
Do you, do you know why they?
I, P, one of the, so I get, we get what are called recorded, recorded comments or requests to our, our, uh, director head, and it doesn't give names, it doesn't give phone numbers. I, if, if the office gets a phone call, they just type up the message and send it out, or if they leave a message, we get that message. Uh, it, I don't know who it was, um.
Oh, just one person?
It's, I, it's been, it's been three different ones, yeah, yeah.
It's one of those, if you do, you do, if you do, you don't.
Yep.
That's just like, you know, somebody asked me, they said, who in the world recommended forty-five miles an hour up through Hamilton Court? I said, I did.
And I was all for that.
Me too.
And I was all for it. Lee will have a recommendation in July, and thank you.
Not right.
Appreciate it, but I'd just like to say one thing, because there's sort of humor in a way, you know, when, when Jack was saying, you know, tentative or whatever, you know, and Lee's sitting in the background, really.
But I will say this, Lee, that it's been from day one, you have kept us involved, and thank you.
That's, that's my job, is to keep, keep you guys involved, it's, it's not just our job, it's not just our road, I mean, it's y'all's community, so. Uh, I, like I said, I came in before this job was even let, and, uh, so I got to be the one to ask the, the tough questions up there, it's like, have we thought about shutting this down and doing it quick? Because they were pushing to get it done, it was in, uh, it had to be let that year, and it was part of, uh, that, this, this bridge was actually the first project that was let using the money from the gas tax that was, that happened a couple of years ago. So this was a big, significant push to get this out. So, uh, that's, they were sweating whether they could get the design done, all this stuff, and so I was like, I, I told them, I, they said, well, you go talk to them, I said, absolutely. So I came down and talked, and we came to an agreement. Yes, sir.
Lee, I just say one other thing. Has a by dock been mentioned yet?
Has what?
The train.
The train, you know.
Up with the train.
Going over it.
Uh, no, it hasn't been mentioned to me yet.
Okay, good. Well, there's a way around it. Lee, thank you very much.
Any, any other questions on, that you would have for the department?
Appreciate what you did.
Yeah. All right.
I appreciate, because I've lived a lot of places, and the fact that T-DOT doesn't just come in here and do whatever they want to do, that they're actually asking for the communities, and, but that doesn't happen.
Yeah, well, like I said, if, if, if they, if Mr. White and Mr. Grooms had said, no, we don't want to close this down, uh, we would have phased it, and it'd been, but the thing is, it'd been eighteen months versus what, what we said then, so. I, I realize it was a, a big thing, and it is a big inconvenience, but it will be open for school next, uh, when they start back in the, in the fall, so we'll be ready to go.
Good.
Another month from now, everybody forget it.
I don't know, everybody forget it. I know people have gotten hold of my phone number, and especially in the beginning, I, I was getting phone calls about every five minutes, so.
We were too, personally.
That's okay, that's okay. Part of the job.
Yeah, that's right.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Lee, very much.
Thank y'all.
All right, special, Philip, you got, you had two or three things.
Yeah, I'll be brief, I promise. So just on the, um, the downtown project, City Hall parking lot is open, um, we're doing social media posts to try to make sure we go back to one way on that, so, um, good, good update on downtown, by the way. East Mercer Street, it's finished, that project is finished, if you've seen it, but the drainage, uh, done by our, our staff, um, Ted and, and David and some others, so they did that, and it's, that section's been paved back over. Harold's bathroom, it started, foundation, plumbing, um, the taps have been made. Uh, we did get our rate back on our health insurance, uh, it's going up five percent. We budgeted a little more, uh, so we're gonna, um, absorb all of that, no plan in the change in the end of plan documents. And then we are also, we're changing our vision and dental to Blue Cross, it's a little better coverage, and we're actually absorbing that too, to help with benefits for employees. Let me see anything on that?
I was just gonna add, so we cover one hundred percent of the employee-only coverage, and the city pretty much covers majority of the cost on the other plans as well, so employee plus child, employee plus spouse, and employee plus family, the highest that a, a person pays is about a hundred dollars a paycheck, um, uh, for family coverage, which is amazing, um, and unheard of around here. So we, if we can absorb that in our budget, that's been something the city's been doing for years. So with the increase being five percent, like Philip said, we're increasing it, uh, we're absorbing all of it, but the other part that we were able to do this year, because the increase was so low and switching to Blue Cross Blue Shield, that premium didn't go up that much, and we looked at how much our employees even contributing to the dental and vision plan, and because employee only is covered already, we were able to absorb, um, most of that cost as well, so employees will get dental and vision at no cost to them, and that's for everybody, not just employee-only plans. So that's about eight thousand dollars a year that employees were giving us, that we're giving back from the rest of the budget, so eight thousand split over all of our funds. We looked at the numbers, and we were like, you know, we, we can fit that in our budget, so then medical, the employees will contribute, but dental and vision would be, uh, one hundred percent covered by the city for all employees.
It's a small benefit, that we can continue to get better benefits, so, uh, no, it's not a big deal, but, uh, over time, that adds up.
There I go, chief, see?
Maybe, we'll see, we'll see after the last agenda.
We're not, we're not having the turnover problem that a lot of other communities are, and I can assure you that that's one of the things.
Uh, just a couple more things.
Yeah, but you got, Philip.
Employee recognition, second page, Peyton Finley, um, started as a seasonal employee, transitioned to full-time in utility department, just want to recognize him, uh, for his service to the city. Uh, and two more things, uh, TD Hall is closed Thursday, uh, for Jeep paint, and, uh, make sure everybody knows that we are having a meeting at Gardenia Park, uh, from ten to four, ten to four, different activities, uh, throughout the day, and, uh, Alicia's worked hard on putting that together, along with the parsing rate board. And the last thing I have is I'm on vacation next week for the whole week, so.
And we have.
Congratulations for vacation. Well deserved.
Thank you.
Next Thursday, or next. I gotta look.
Yes, it's next Thursday.
Twenty-fifth is the groundbreaking for Externer.
What time is that?
I've gotta be there at ten AM. And gotta be there for a long time today. They're asking me to speak, so.
I'll send you out an email, the times, but fourth in the week.
That's big. Hundred million investment. Roughly. Waste water liaison report.
Um, Mayor Commission, you have a detailed report in your packets, and then Matthew was here, um, Thursday night to go over where we're at with the wastewater treatment. I'll just hit on a few high points. The ongoing, uh, performance tests is for the MBR, or membrane bioreactor system. They're working on the carbon feed system installation, and they're working through the punch list.
Okay. Any questions? I've noticed on here, I highlighted that a recently approved deadline request has been approved, so. Mount Pleasant. Yes?
Yes, sir. Mayor Commissioners, uh, rate study is underway. We should know something, I'd say, in the next few months. Um, we, if you know, we've talked about for several months, we work with engineering over the past few months to get some concepts for those capital projects. Now what we're doing, we met with, uh, Zach and Symmetry this week and looking at some of those industrial contracts. What do we need to do there? When the initial stages of that, so, uh, because there's been more requests out there for different industry. So that's ongoing, but we're, we're continuing to meet to try to get the best plan in front of you guys in the future.
Good. Any questions for Phillip on gas? Hearing now, new business, resolution twenty twenty-five dash four, resolution of the city to authorize the city to enter into a professional service agreement with civil and environmental consultants related to zone meters. Cory?
The city applied for and received award for a fiscal year twenty twenty-four infrastructure planning grant. And by resolution twenty twenty-four forty-two, the city decided to use half of these grant funds to develop a sewer system analysis. Staff proposes to use the rest of this grant for the engineering and installation of zone meters. Zone meters are large water meters that would be placed in water zones in, uh, Mount Pleasant's water service areas. They would monitor their amount of water going to each zone, which would help the city identify leaks. The city selected CEC to perform this work. The purpose of this resolution is to enter into a contract with CEC for the de- development of zone meters. The contract, which includes the scope of work, is in your packet and online. The cro- contract includes different, uh, several different scopes of work. CEC and staff recommend that you select to hire CEC to perform engineering services and installation support for meters one through three. And both of those, uh, are in your resolution as well. The cost of this engineering scope is, um, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. The project cost will exceed the funding awarded from the planning grant. The grant is two hundred, the rest of the planning grant is two hundred and nine thousand. Um, two hundred and nine.
Yes.
Yeah, and the city covers nineteen thousand.
Okay. Any questions? We've discussed this quite a bit. Any questions or comments? Hearing now entertain a motion for approval?
I make a motion that we accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash four.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. We're gonna move through these next ones, as all are related to the budget again, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five. Authorizing, authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds to nonprofit Mount Pleasant Museum. Uh, that is twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. Any questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
Make a motion we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, resolution authorizing the appropriation of, uh, funds towards a Mount Pleasant Ford Foundation or Main Street, and that is twenty-five thousand, and that will be looked at very closely next year. But I will say that so far Caroline has been excellent to work with. Any questions?
Mayor, I'll make a motion in favor of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds for the Mount Pleasant senior citizens, and that is seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. Any questions? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight. Resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds to a kids' place, and we talked about that, and that is a wonderful organization. Any questions? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine, a resolution to approve service agreement with online utility exchange for collection services. Shifer, Phillip presented that Thursday. Anything you want to add to it?
We, we've had, um, ACSI for a very long time, and we went back and been reviewing it, and we've been trying to get a grip on some of our old debt and trying to see if we could get a better collection agency. So we kind of communicate with a couple of other utilities in the area, and this service came back as something that was, seemed like they were going to be more hands-on and try to collect on some of the old accounts. We tried to collect internally for a good ninety days before we turned anybody over to collection. Um, but eventually, if we wanted to expand services, the other thing about those companies, if we wanted to expand the services for soft credit checks in the future, or if we needed to do, um, just, uh, to see if somebody was in a good standing, this company is able to like verify those type of things as well. So as we grow, this company could grow with us. The other company, I think, collected one account since I've been here, which is nothing compared to what we really need them to do. And the thing about collection agencies, if you turn them over the first year, um, the first year, they actually deduct a smaller portion. But the longer you wait, the more the collection agencies usually keep of that amount, because that's how they collect their fees, is like, if they collect a hundred dollars, they'll keep thirty-five of it, and we'll get the difference. But we're still getting revenue that we have written off already, so. When we did our write-offs a few months ago, we've already written it off a book, so any money we collect on these accounts is now, uh, addition to our budget. We really don't budget to collect anything, so that's extra. So I'm really looking forward to working with this new company, so even if we can collect ten percent of what we've turned over, that's still three or four thousand dollars we didn't have in our budget, so.
Alright, any questions? Hearing now entertain a motion?
I make a motion we accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty, a resolution of the city to authorize the city to enter into a professional service agreement with Barge Design for a Water Wastewater System Asset Management Plan. Cory?
The purpose of this resolution is to enter into this professional service agreement with Barge to develop the asset management plan for the water and wastewater systems. This, the, this plan is required to retain eligibility under the American Rescue Plan Grant. The proposed asset management plan will catalog and characterize the water and wastewater system components, provide planning support for future equipment replacement strategies and maintenance, and provide the platform for future development of work order tracking and maintenance records. The cost of this engineering service is fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um, the proposed professional service agreement is in your packet and online.
We've discussed this quite a bit too, which is a good money spent, no matter what we got. Any questions or comments? Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion in favor of resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one, a resolution approving change order number five of the construction contract with BH Craig for the twenty twenty-one wastewater treatment plant improvements.
This involves a construction contract for the wastewater treatment plant project. As you know, we learned that the quality of the city's mixed liquor was not in alignment with membrane manufacturer standards. This required additional piping to be installed, and critical path activities were delayed. The city authorized additional work in March, with the understanding that a change order would be presented to you. This is that change order. The change order adds thirty-six thousand, three hundred and five dollars to the contract in a hundred and fifty-eight days. The purpose of this resolution is to approve that change order, and also this is contingent on approval from USDA Rural Development.
And this, when you was coming, Barge gets all about all this money, right, still?
Yeah, so the air liquidated damages, um, which I think is assessed a thousand days, but this thirty-six thousand is outside of that scope that's added to the total.
But we gotta do it right now.
Yes, we. Yes, we had to do it because some of the material was, we, we discussed was too harsh for the membranes. So this will be something that we'll utilize in the future anyway. And I think BH Craig actually gave us a really good price on it. I think in the future, when everything's done, it would have cost a lot more.
Good, so.
I think we did a good job here.
Dale, thank you, man.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Not entertain a motion?
Make a motion we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a number of seconds? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. A resolution to approve a contract with Sam Sari for the cam, however you say it, for the camera system or the trash truck, and this films when they pick it up, drop it off, and if they did any damage, basically, right?
Yep, so this resolution is just to renew the existing sanitation truck camera system. The contract is for three years, and it's approximately one thousand, one hundred dollars per year.
I don't know how they do it for that, but I'm glad they did. Any comments, questions? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion we accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a couple of seconds? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three, a resolution of the city to approve a high-spending vendor list, and you do have that as part of your resolution attached in. Shifra, and I think, Phillip, you really kind of covered this last Thursday more than Shifra. Anybody want to add anything to it? You see it's attached, and, uh, this just saves a lot of time, what this does.
It does, and if we, there's certain things on there that we've have discussed internally. If we, of course, majority of this is in the utilities. There's not a lot of the general fund stuff in here. And, um, like Motorola, they're actually the state contract. I just thought about that, so they would come off, but some of these are actual bid, some of them may have been bid, some of them may be an internal, but a lot of these are not. They're like just big vendors that we spend a lot of money with. But I, our employees usually internally, if they're spending five thousand or more with a lot of vendors, they'll, they'll do research on that too, because that's our purchasing policy. But like chemicals or meters, some of that stuff is proprietary, some of it comes from the same person we've been buying for years. So just putting it all together is vendors that internally, we need to eventually, at some point, some, sometimes look at and try to make sure, like, we're still getting the best deal from buying from the same people over and over, over again. But a lot of them, like I said, internally, the departments have already done some research, because they check pricing every so often to make sure they're still getting the best deal by going with the same vendor that they have been. If they're not, they will switch, but just wanted to present that to y'all, because our purchasing policy does say that we, if we spend twenty-five thousand or more with a, with a vendor, we bring it to y'all. But these are projects or things that have happened all year, so it's not one single project, because the majority of the time, one single project does come to y'all for approval. Um, but this is just stuff that's collected in a fiscal year, so. Just, and if y'all see anything that you, you want to question or email us about, this is the reason why this list is in front of you.
Good time to do it right here, budget two.
Yeah.
What is safe industry for you?
Safe industries.
Safe industry, sorry.
That's yours, is that one of the fire department ones?
Fire department may use, or even other departments. I think a good example is like someone local that we go to, and we're spending maybe a couple of thousand a month, even though the, the product may be a hundred this time or three hundred next time, and, but it adds up over that threshold, and what we're trying to do is make sure we're clear that we're not, um, we're not spending more than twenty-five thousand in one city, and it's over that July first to June thirtieth threshold.
Now, I can look up what safe industries, it's real quick, can't remember off the top.
It's, uh, fire equipment thing, and it could be some other stuff too.
I just think it's a great example when, when citizens ask us, like, who's walking, you know, how do you know where your money's going? That fact that we can show, well, we can show you actually down to this kind of level that we're looking at. You know, city staff is constantly looking to make sure we're not overspending and we're being, um, careful with the citizens' money.
And that's, that's what I said, that's the whole point of this list is, um, our purchasing policy says twenty-five and up, and I, I know ACE is on there, and they're right underneath twenty-five, but I was thinking the next statement for June comes in, they'll probably hit that threshold, so I'll put ACE on there. But sometimes we do business with businesses that are available in town, and it's better for us to do a business, business with a, you know, locally than drive somewhere else too, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Good. Alright, having that. Entertain a motion?
Mayor, make a motion in favor of resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four. Resolution to approve the city manager employment agreement with Mr. Phillip.
Don't say the whole name, Mayor.
No.
So we did talk about this at the study session, um, all of the changes that were made or highlighted. You want me to go over the terms again? I can. We will take the highlights off before y'all sign it, if you approve it.
Thank you. Thank you. Good, I kept looking for it. I hope those are gone. Any questions? Phillip, you're doing a heck of a job, man.
Thank you.
I can tell you how, what a pleasure it is to work with you, because Phillip and I work close. Closely. Thank you. Anything you'd like to add?
No, I appreciate, like I said, uh, Thursday night, uh, when I first took this, you guys know I did not want it, did not want it. I had no intentions of really staying in there for a year, but it's been a pleasure working for you five for the last eleven, twelve months now. The job is challenging, it is hard, and so I'm already, we're beating our head against the wall every day about that, but it's been a pleasure working with you, so. Yeah, let's move forward. Let's keep it on.
Any other comments, questions?
I just think, I know, you've just gone above and beyond, I think, what all of us, I think we all knew you could do a great job, but you've just done more than a great job. You've done an incredible job.
Thank you.
And, um, it shows in the staff. I think it just, you can feel it, that people are people are really excited to be part of the city again, so, thank you.
And I really appreciate the transparency.
Amen.
Teaching me what I need to know.
Well, I think one thing I've learned through twenty-five years of local government is that it's okay to say I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know everything, but we'll find out, or try to find out.
It's okay.
I just think you're doing a wonderful job, and I appreciate everything that you're doing for the city and the employees. And thank you for always listening and taking my phone calls. I appreciate it.
Boy, that's a handful right there in and of itself.
Phillip, you know I'm a job, boy, so you should.
Alright, entertain a motion?
Let me do this. I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four for Arnold Phillip group.
You just had to do it, didn't you?
I had to.
Oh, love it. We got a second. All those in favor?
Put your seconds.
Yeah. Motion carries. We had no one sign up to speak. So, any other comments? Board of staff, just thank y'all for everything you're doing. I mean, I was at the topping out ceremony today at Columbia State, and, uh, I can assure you, there are a whole lot of communities that surround us that are not in the shape we're in financially or with the employees. I can assure you of that. They were talking.
Good stuff.
Good stuff, so anybody else got anything?
I just want to thank, uh, Chamber of Commerce in our home for giving us these cards. It's just a little card to wish us a happy June, and they didn't have to, but they did. It's not good for me, you know.
Alright, entertain a motion?
Mayor, I'd just like to say one thing. Yeah, what you have all to do, and that's, I, I guess, you know, if you saw in the paper, you're going along with what Spring Hill is doing right now, you know? And, and we might as well get ready, because it's coming south more than what we especially thought it probably was to go. I think from what I understand, what they have now in Spring Hill is, is good to go, but anything else is questionable. So there may be, and I just hope, you know, we say, we gotta look at this.
We're putting the brake on. I was at a meeting last Thursday morning, and the mayor spoke up and said, we're not issuing any more sewer permits.
I think the only thing I'd add to that, and Dale would agree, is that we look at it from an engineer's perspective, and then we have standards that we have to stay with, and when it comes to that point, we have to say no.
Right, yeah. We said all along, we don't touch the brakes. We're not gonna wind up in that shape.
You're right.
But it can happen, it's so easy, like, turn.
Gotta have the right people.
I make a motion.
I second.
Got a second? All those in favor?